Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I now call to order this May 28th, 2024, meeting of Lancaster City Council. A couple of reminders for everybody at the top of the meeting. This is a good opportunity to silence your phones and devices if you haven't done so already. This meeting and its participants are being recorded. This evening, there will be several opportunities for public comment. If you wish to make comment, please do so at the podium and speak into the microphone so that you could be heard in this room and on our livestream. Please begin comments with your name and block of residence for our meeting record. Comments should be addressed toward Council. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. And to help us keep time, I will have a light here. It will turn green when the speaker begins, turn yellow when there is one minute remaining, and turn red when three minutes has been exhausted. Thank you in advance for helping us keep equal time for everyone. And now for those who are willing and able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harris, would you please call the role of members?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Madden?
Here.
Mr. Royo?
Here.
Mr. Gleese? Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Hirsch?
Here.
And President Beckett?
Here. Councilor Collext is excused this evening. Our next item is the approval of the minutes for the May 14th meeting of Council. Are there... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any Council comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Madden?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Beckett?
Aye. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Proclamations, Honors, Awards, and Resolutions of Recognition. I don't believe we have any of those this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Madam President.
Thank you very much. That will bring us then to our first public comment period. This is reserved for residents who have contacted the city clerk prior to tonight's meeting to request the opportunity to address City Council. The duration of those comments is again limited to three minutes per speaker, and please begin with your name and block of residence. Mr. Harris, do we have a public comment for this period?
We do, Madam President. First is Ashley Navalas.
Thank you. Good evening. And before you begin, if you could just hit the button on the microphone to make sure that it is...
I'm going to read. Hello, my name is Ashley. I'm a resident of Lancaster City. Today, I am sharing a letter, an open letter, to Lancaster City Council written by multiple Lancaster organizations about why local municipalities must call for a ceasefire in Gaza. For over seven months, we've been watching genocide livestreamed on our phones, watching in horror as entire Palestinian families are wiped out in Gaza by the Israeli military using weapons paid by our tax dollars. Over 36,000 Palestinians have been killed since October 7th, a majority of which are women and children, with over double that number injured. More than 50% of all structures in Gaza have been damaged, 360,000 housing units damaged, schools, hospitals, and places of worship decimated. The United Nations Human Rights Office released a special report in March 2024 claiming, quote, "By analyzing the patterns of violence and Israel's policies and its onslaught of Gaza, this report concludes that there are reasonable grounds to believe that the threshold indicating Israel's commission of genocide is met," end quote. We urge Lancaster City Council to introduce and pass a resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza and the release of all hostages and prisoners held by both Hamas and Israel. Lancaster is itself home to refugees from Gaza, many of whom still have family there. If Lancaster is to ever be the future home of Palestinians who have left Gaza due to this destruction, they will feel more welcome and safe in Lancaster knowing a ceasefire resolution was passed. Ceasefire is the welcoming standard. We have collaboratively drafted a resolution that we are asking Lancaster City Council to introduce and pass. The resolution has received input from members of the Palestinian and Jewish communities, and we believe it centers the need for peace and an end to this death and destruction. Lancaster would be in good company with other municipalities and the Commonwealth that have passed ceasefire resolutions like Erie and State College. Passing municipal-level ceasefire resolutions signals upward to the state and federal governments what constituents are calling for: an immediate and permanent ceasefire. The genocide in Gaza is a local concern. Weapons paid for by our tax dollars are being used to kill civilians, including the family members of current Palestinian refugees in Lancaster. We are calling upon our local elected officials to stand on the right side of history by calling for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza with urgency. Lancaster Palestine Coalition, Lancaster Democratic Socialists of America, Lancaster Stands Up, Mennonite Action Lancaster, Lancaster Changemakers, Party for Socialism and Liberation Lancaster, Lancaster Abolition Group, Franklin and Marshall Coalition for Peace and Justice, Peace Action Network of Lancaster, Millersville University Students for Justice and Peace. Thank you very much.
Do we have further speakers for this period?
Yes. Next speaker would be Nick Silvery-Hiller.
Good evening. Good evening. Hi, my name is Nick Silvery-Hiller, and I live on the 400 block of North Plum Street, and I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation here in Lancaster. I've lived in Lancaster for nearly 10 years, and over these 10 years, I have spoken in front of the City Council many times on social, racial, and economic justice issues affecting our communities. But today, I speak on one of, if not the most urgent issues I have ever spoken to you about, and likely one of the most important issues of any of our lifetimes. I'm here today to urge and demand that the City Council of the City of Lancaster take urgent action to pass a resolution for the immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Just in the past few days, we have witnessed the horror of Israelis... of the Israelis... Excuse me, of Israel's genocidal campaign against the people of Palestine. I speak, of course, on the massacre underway in Rafa. On May 24th, this past Friday, the International Criminal Court called on Israel to immediately, to quote, "immediately halt its military offensive and any other action in Rafa government which may inflict upon the Palestinian group in Gaza conditions of life that would bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part." President Biden has also stated that an invasion of Rafa would be a red line, which he has, which has been crossed, yet no action has been taken by his administration. And yet, just two nights ago, Israel bombed, dropped three bombs on a refugee camp, a supposed, quote-unquote, "safe zone," which killed 50 Palestinians and injured 149 others. This is only the latest atrocity among so much cruel and brutal violence levied against the Palestinian people, not just since October, but since 1948. And I want to highlight this most recent violation against humanity because it demonstrates clearly that the institutions at the highest levels are failing to stop the genocide by Israel against the Palestinian people. And the only thing that has slowed down this genocide, even in the most minute way, has come from, hasn't come from those at the top, but those of us at the bottom. The masses of people who have organized and mobilized for the past eight months, some of us have been organizing for years, for decades, and even generations. LBJ didn't pass the Civil Rights Act because he wanted to. He did because he had a mass grassroots movement that forced him. The U.S. didn't want to pull out of Vietnam because Nixon or Ford believed in the peace all of a sudden. South Africa apartheid didn't end because any president or senator had a change of their beliefs. All of these historic events happened because the actions of hundreds of thousands of people took action for peace and justice at the local and community level. A resolution for the immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza from this council would be one of those thousands of actions that build up. When the history books are written, will your names be in it? What will the book say about your actions? Now, in retrospect, it's always easy to claim that you would have stood for justice, but in the moment while injustice is happening, is the only moment when it matters. In five, 10 years, it'll be too late.
Mr. Silvery-Hiller, I just want to point out that we've run three minutes. I do want to make sure that everyone has equal time this evening, and I appreciate your comments deeply. Thank you.
Could I just end with, just, I want to make sure that it's known that 90% of the U.S. poll of Americans support an immediate and permanent ceasefire. This isn't a, uh, this is a popular position and free Palestine. Thank you.
Do we have further speakers this evening for this period?
Yes, next is Josh Redd.
Mr. Josh Redd?
Good evening. I'm Josh Redd. I live on the 300 block of Lime Street, and I'm also a member of the local branch of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I'm a Lancaster resident of nearly 20 years. I'm here tonight to call attention to the ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people. It's been well over half a year, and over 35,000 people, most of them children, have been killed by the IOF. These numbers don't include those stuck beneath the rubble and destroyed buildings across Gaza. The people that I talk to from all walks of life in the city are horrified by the images they see online and in the news. We do not want our tax dollars go into the military contracts that result in the wholesale slaughter of an entire people. What has been happening in Gaza is truly barbaric, and we must do all that we can to end it. So I'm here to call for the introduction of a ceasefire resolution by the Lancaster City Council and for a vote of approval. We would and should follow in the steps of State College in Erie and over 100 other municipalities across the country. Let us be on the right side of history, supporting the freedom of the Palestinian people and end to lethal apartheid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we do. Next is Ira Weisberg.
Mr. Weisberg, good evening.
Good evening. And thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. So my name is Ira Weisberg. I am 71 years old and am a resident of the City of Lancaster. I'm here to speak in favor of the City Council calling for a ceasefire in Palestine. I was born in 1953, only eight years after the end of World War II. Growing up in a Jewish family, my earliest memories were of my grandparents crying. It seemed like they were always crying, and why wouldn't they? Their parents, siblings, aunts, uncles, cousins, friends, and neighbors all perished in the ghettos and concentration camps of Nazi-occupied Poland. My grandparents survived because their parents had the means and foresight to place some of their children on a boat headed to Ellis Island. If not for that, I would not be here today. I grew up in the city of Philadelphia and am no stranger to antisemitism. As a 13-year-old Jewish boy, I was bar mitzvid, and a tree in my name was planted in Israel, or at least that's what my rabbi told me. You might think that, given my history, I would be a staunch supporter of the State of Israel. Actually, I was until about the age of 17. That's the year I began to read and learn about the actual history of Israel rather than simply trusting what I had always heard. Since that time, I have seen Israel as a deeply dysfunctional country, a country that has much in common with the Jim Crow South of our own country and the former apartheid system of South Africa. There is one important difference, though. In both the American South and apartheid South Africa, blacks were needed to supply cheap labor to the ruling elites. Consequently, they could be exploited and brutalized, but not murdered en masse. In the apartheid state of Israel, Palestinians are not needed as a source of cheap labor. That is why Israel can both exterminate and/or displace the entire population of Gaza. They are expendable, all of them, men, women, and children. That is why Israel has murdered almost 40,000 Palestinians in Gaza in the past eight months. That is why the International Court of Justice has determined that there is a plausible case for genocide against the State of Israel. Zionism is a political ideology, not a religion. Zionism is not Judaism, and for hundreds of thousands of Jews around the world, it has nothing to do with Judaism. In discussing the current situation in Palestine with many people, I often hear them ask, "But what can I do?"
Mr. Weisberg, I'm very sorry, but three minutes has been reached.
Let me, I will skip some of this and finish quickly.
Very quickly, thank you.
In the context of this meeting, the answer is easy. This council can move forward with a resolution calling for an end to the siege in Gaza. Please do the right thing, move forward to pass a resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, are there further speakers for this period?
Yes, sir. Next is Morgan Thomas.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Morgan. I was born and raised in Lancaster County, and I'm actually a resident of Washington Borough. I echo the previous speaker's comments for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. As a mother, I stand before you haunted by harrowing images and heartbreaking stories of innocent Palestinian women, children, and men falling victim to the relentless violence inflicted by Israel's genocide. Through the lens of social media, I've witnessed the agony of mothers losing their children, families torn apart, and Palestinian communities shattered by the brutalities of Israel's calculated genocide, occupation, and colonization. The adoption of a ceasefire resolution is not merely a political gesture, it is a moral imperative. It's about recognizing the humanity of every Palestinian and affirming their right to live in safety and dignity. It's about saying enough to the cycle of genocidal violence that has claimed far too many lives. In the words of Eli Weiselman, a renowned social activist and a Holocaust survivor, "We must always take sides." "Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim." "Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented." Let us not be silent in the face of injustice. Let us take a stand against the genocide unfolding before our eyes and work tirelessly towards a future where every Palestinian person can live free from fear and oppression. You're allowed to say at any point, "I can't support this genocide anymore." Even if you did, even if you were unsure, you can at any point say, "This has gone too far." And while the best time to say this was eight months ago, the second best time is now, today. Thank you.
Do we have further speakers for this period?
We do. Next is Joshua Navalas.
Good evening. My name is Joshua. I'm a resident of Lancaster City. I would love to be here today in higher spirits, but this weekend, I spent most of my time watching airstrikes burn up and destroy tents full of families and children who were seeking refuge in Rafa. While too many of our elected leaders continue to be silent or heartily endorse the genocide of these Palestinians, I have seen more dead bodies in the past eight months than I have seen in my entire life. And that is probably the same for many people in this room. And those bodies have been massacred by U.S. tax dollars. Those bodies have been blown into pieces that their children and siblings and neighbors have to look for with the help of Pennsylvania tax dollars. The people in Gaza are being starved by the State of Israel while drones fill the sky and bomb debris fill their streets, and we are funding it. We have community members of family directly impacted by Israel's relentless attack on Gaza. We have Palestinian neighbors and local Palestinian business owners in our city. How can Lancaster boast of being a welcoming city for immigrants and refugees if we are not condemning the atrocities that make them seek refuge in the first place? And furthermore, when we participate in those atrocities? To be frank, calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire is the bare minimum. It is far past time the welcoming city goes on record to say, "Ceasefire now, immediate humanitarian aid into Gaza, and end U.S. funding of genocide." It would be a shame if this body passed up the opportunity to do so now. Thank you.
Do we have further comments for this period?
We do, Madam President. Next is Sisi Sada.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Hi. Thank you. My name is Sisi Sadek, and I am an immigrant from Gaza. Today, I want to talk to you about the importance of addressing and passing a ceasefire resolution. I moved to Lancaster after the 2008 war on Gaza, and I remember that day vividly. I remember being at school in recess on a swing when the IOF bombed a military tower less than 100 yards away from my school. I remember the panic and the screams and glass shattering, and I remember the hysteria and searching for my brother and going home with a stranger because my mother could not reach us with all the rubble and the corpses that separated us from her. And I remember the months that followed, months of fear, of running, of huddling in living rooms and praying war crafts away. But I also remember the sun peeking through the clouds when I moved to Lancaster after the war ended. I remember feeling the immense support and love the community has here, a feeling that has only grown as I've gotten older and as this community has shaped me into the woman I am. But the first day of the war has played on a loop in my brain every single day since October, as it does every single time the IOF bombed Gaza, something that happens with more frequency than you and I could fathom. More importantly than all of that, I remember calling my father and my four siblings, who are still in Rafa, and telling them, and promising them a home here, telling them that they will be welcomed with open arms, and they will have the childhood that I've had, a childhood that is safe and full of love and support and community. And I think about this conversation a lot, and it is almost always underlined with a sense of shame because I believe I've lied to them. The council's inactions and unwillingness to even address a ceasefire resolution proves that this county could not be supportive of their presence. Your inactions in no means, however, take away from the community's support, which has been overwhelming. Through the Saturday protests and countless of other events, this community has shown its support from my family and my people, and I urge you to listen to what the community wants, and even more importantly, what it needs. How can Lancaster County claim to be a welcoming space for immigrants when it has turned its back on the Palestinian people when they need it most? A ceasefire resolution is the bare minimum, and we should have been the first county to pass one as soon as this genocide started. The fact that we haven't makes us hypocrites. You cannot promise a safe place of refuge for people in need, but not do everything you can to make this space safe. I implore you to please set the standards for what is right, to please stop looking away from the murder of thousands of innocent civilians. I beg you not to look away from the families that have been torn apart, mine included, and from those who have lost more than you and I could ever, ever understand. We have been working on a resolution for months, editing draft after draft to make it palatable, being told left and right that the stats we've written or the horrors we've highlighted might be too controversial. I've had to erase line after line depicting my people's sufferings and taking yet another thing from them, their truth. But despite all of this, I still push for the resolution being passed and addressed because that simple notion will set a standard moving forward, a standard that proves the humanity of this county. This is the bare minimum. It is the first step, and we cannot move forward as a county that welcomes immigrants without setting this standard first. Thank you.
Other comments for this period?
Yes, next we have Andy Tran.
Good evening. Hello. My name is pronounced Andy Chan. I've lived in Lancaster County for the last 20 years. I'm here to support the ceasefire resolution as well. This week, I keep seeing posts with a quote from a 1963 interview with James Baldwin about American violence and oppression. about American violence and oppression, saying, "I'm terrified at the moral apathy, the death of the heart, which is happening in my country." My partner asked me about what motivates me to keep speaking on this, and it's the terror my family must have gone through fleeing Vietnam in the 1960s and 70s. The fact that funding genocide is so acceptable that I stand before you over 50 years later demanding the same basic rights that my family deserved then. I view it as a privileged education to know what it means to be marginalized in America. Being able to feel disgust at violence is very precious to me. The past seven months, I keep seeing images of white shroud-wrapped bodies of folks like you and me, that no longer clean because they're sopping wet with blood. One could almost imagine they're from a slasher film. What have you seen? Have you seen the videos of Palestinians holding plastic grocery bags that jiggle grotesquely like they're filled with jello? And then you realize it's the pieces of someone's family, someone who was once whole and is now only pieces of an oozing liver and a splintered hand? Have you seen the video from February of Sidra Hasouna, age seven years old, where she's no longer alive, where local men are trying to reach her limp, legless torso dangling in the air before them because she's impaled on the wreckage of a building? Have you heard the phone call of Hindra Jab in January, six years old, to her mother, begging for rescue as her mother tells her, wait, they're coming, they're coming? The terror in her small voice as she describes the car she is trapped in with her murdered family around her for hours? Have you seen the hundreds of thousands of videos begging for help? Please stop, don't skip, don't scroll, we need your help, we're so tired. There's no fresh water, there's no food, we can't find medicine, we can't outrun the bombs, we can't leave the hellfire. How will I protect my children? I've lost my father, please help me save my mother. Civilian safety is the bare minimum, the absolute minimum, and any answer less than calling for permanent ceasefire is unacceptable. Thank you.
Are there further commenters for this period?
Yes, next is Min Fan.
Just make sure that I read my notes down. Good evening. My name is Min Fan. I'm a student at Franklin Marshall College, here to speak on behalf of the FNM Student Group Coalition for Peace and Justice, as well as the hundreds of FNM students, faculty, staff, and alumni who have joined our call for a permanent ceasefire. I am here tonight because on Sunday, Israeli airstrikes targeted a refugee camp in Rafah where thousands of Palestinians have sought shelter because they thought it was a safe zone. It has been over 200 days, long enough for all of us to end the silence. This is not an issue too far away for us to care about. The U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights reported that every year, $778,044 of Lancaster taxpayers' money is used to fund Israel's weapons. That same amount could instead fund 92 households with public housing for an entire year, free or low-cost health care for 270 children, solar electricity for over 2,200 households for a year. We're all paying the price of this catastrophic loss of human lives with our tax dollars. We're all doing a disservice to our fellow human beings with our silence. This is not an issue too complicated to take a stance on. One does not have to be an expert to recognize the immorality of at least 40,000 Palestinian lives lost since the beginning of Israel's war on Gaza, and that the only way to put this to an end is a permanent ceasefire, a call that has been endorsed by Amnesty International and Human Rights Watch, as well as millions of people worldwide. A resolution like this is also not just symbolic, but a way to urge politicians to heed the call. Even as federal leadership waivers, city leadership must remain a voice for the city's values and reflect the urgent demand of its residents. Therefore, the Coalition for Peace and Justice, the FNM community, stands with Lancaster organizations and residents, calling for the city council to adopt a ceasefire resolution. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Harris, are there further comments for this first period of comment?
There are none, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I want to just say that I know that there were some requests that came to council after our cutoff this afternoon, and we do have a second public comment period if you wish to stay for the end of the meeting to speak during that time. I also want to thank all of the members of the community who came out for tonight to voice concerns about the violence in Gaza. I am personally appalled by the loss of innocent life, and I condemn violence and destruction taking place, and I also want all of the hostages home. I do, however, believe that a resolution from Lancaster City Council may put our Muslim and Palestinian neighbors in the line of fire hateful rhetoric. We have unfortunately seen this play out recently after we passed our welcoming city ordinance, which provided tangible protections to our immigrant neighbors. That being said, I want you all to be aware that in the coming days, I will be drafting a letter as Lancaster City Council President to be delivered to our federal elected officials to express my personal support for a ceasefire, return of hostages, and immediate aid. I will share this draft with other members of council to sign on if they wish. Again, thank you for being here this evening. We will now move to the next meeting of our agenda. I will give you a moment if you wish to step out. You're welcome to do so, you're also welcome to stay. The next item on the agenda is reports requested by council. Mr. Harris, do we have any of those this evening?
We do not, Madam President.
Thank you very much. The next item is interim reports of committees of council. Do we have any of those this evening, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Madam President.
Thank you. We will then begin our legislative agenda for this evening. Our first item on the legislative agenda, item A, is the Heritage Conservation District. Mr. Harris.
Considering the filing application and recommendation from the Historical Commission for improvements to a property within the Heritage Conservation District we have won this evening, Haggar Arcade Convenio Association, owners of 10 North Market Street, proposed installation of new projecting metal balconies on the building's east and north elevations, and this was recommended for approval by the Historical Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'll hear a motion for the item.
Most of the proof. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Counselor President. In my absence for the last meeting, I'm going to ask that Director Delft would address this. I'm sorry. I understand. I'm sorry.
Was that about the Haggar Arcade?
Correct. Yes, this is the item for the Arcade. Great. We'll have a public comment for this in just a moment. Appreciate it. Director Delft, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Thank you, Counselor Craig. I think there may be a little bit of confusion about this particular item because we actually have spoken about this at the last couple of meetings related to the balconies at this particular property. That was, those actions, both the committee meeting and then the approval action that was taken at the last meeting, was for the easement, the easements required for the balconies. This particular action was heard before the Historical Commission last year, and it was recommended unanimously for approval, but city staff had recommended that we wait for a vote on the certificate of appropriateness because the easement hadn't been decided yet. So easement has now been decided as of a couple weeks ago, and this item is now back before city council. As I mentioned, it was a unanimous decision. Just as a reminder, in terms of the substance of the application here, this is covering 12 metal balconies to be placed on the building's east elevation facing North Market Street. It's also including three balconies to be placed on the north elevation facing West Grant Street. Again, I can share any other details that you might be interested in. It looks like this was originally before the Historical Commission in August of 2023, but was postponed for the reasons I described before.
Thank you, Director Delft. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Sure.
I don't have any further questions at this moment. Are there any members of council that would like to address or ask questions?
Counselor Craig, only to say that just to completely make it clear that we did already approve the easements in the last meeting and discussed the height and the dimensions of these proposed balconies already.
Correct, and this is a more standard vote related to the architectural compatibility of the balconies, the building, this location.
Thank you for that clarification, Director Delft.
Wonderful. The lead from Haggar, from the Haggar Building?
I'm just a representative in case anyone has to make a point.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you very much, Counselor Craig. Any comments from the public on this Heritage Conservation District item? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Min. Mr. Tom. Hi. Ms. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Teles.
Hi.
Mr. Harris.
Hi.
President Baker.
Hi. Thank you very much. The next item on our legislative agenda, MB, Resolutions. We have first Resolution Number 40, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster approving the adoption of an amendment to the Act 537, official sewage facilities plan for the city of Lancaster.
Most of the proof.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Craig again.
Thank you so much. Previously, had approved this previously. There was a small glitch because in our wanting to do the best job possible, approved it, and then the county has to approve and do all their documentation first before we do make our approval. So what has happened, we went ahead, so we're going back and backtracking so that we need to approve this again.
Thank you very much, Counselor Craig.
I think we did that in March.
March, I think so. That's okay, you just give a thumbs up, that's correct, Director Delft. Great.
I'll stay here just in case there's a question.
Is the requirement, just out of my own curiosity, the requirement that the county signs off the sewer control plan from the EPA as well?
Counselor Craig is correct. We jumped the gun a little bit in wanting to be efficient. County is supposed to take action before we did. In this case, the state asked us to come back and do it again, just to make sure we had it in the right order.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any other council comments on the item? Comments from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Min. Mr. Roman. Ms. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Teles.
Hi.
Mr. Hirsch.
Hi.
President Baker.
Hi.
Our next item is Resolution Number 41, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Lancaster authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Lancaster Recreation Commission, the Lancaster Rec Foundation Fund, and the School District of Lancaster regarding the transfers of certain properties and approving the transfer of 525 Fairview Avenue, Lancaster, Pennsylvania, to the School District of Lancaster. Most of the proof. Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. This is coming through public works. Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Counselor President. Yes, so this is, was discussed at our committee meeting. We got kind of an update from Director Campbell and representatives from the schools of Lancaster and Lancaster Rec. In Director Stephen Campbell's absence, I believe, Director Delft is going to summarize some of the details of the agreement. I'm happy to add context as well from my notes from that conversation, but we turn it over to Director Delft.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hirsch. Yes, Director Campbell unfortunately had a family emergency and was not able to make it tonight, so apologies for his absence. I'm happy to cover this item in his stead. We've actually been working across departments on this particular item anyway, so it's relevant for me to fill in from a planning perspective. Just as a brief recap per your request, the resolution that is before council tonight is essentially to approve a multi-party agreement amongst the city of Lancaster, Lancaster Rec Commission, and the School District of Lancaster. The agreement allows for the transfer of land specifically to create an integrated campus which will accommodate a number of different things within that campus. First of all, it accommodates a new Price Elementary School building, which will be a new construction, a larger recreation center within the current school building, and that allows for enhanced programming related to Lancaster Rec. And then finally, I wanted to ensure in the agreement that we have protection and preservation of the park facilities that are now available to the community on the city property, and that includes things like the basketball courts, the walking trails, playground equipment, public art, green infrastructure, and other assets and amenities that we've specified in the agreement itself. This has been a very interesting process to try to work through all the details of the three parties. It's been a really good example of cross-agency collaboration, and I'd like to say that it is a win-win-win for the three partners, and it helps us better serve the city community, particularly in areas of education and childcare and parks and recreation. So very happy to present this before you. If you'll bear with me for just a moment, I also just wanted to note, I took a look at our comprehensive plan right before this meeting, and we have a number of policies in the comp plan that we're implementing through this particular agreement as well. So just to give you a couple quick examples here, in our community well-being element, this is BCC-2.2, there's a policy related to childcare and youth programming, and this is to support childcare services, youth programming, and other supportive services, especially for low-income families, align zoning and permitting to simplify the process for establishing childcare facilities and ensure the availability, pardon me, of these services throughout the city. Also just wanted to note, a shout out to our planning commission, they actually had recommended that we add this particular policy to the comprehensive plan. This is Policy BCC-3.2, and this is specifically planning for schools. And it says, "We're collaboratively with the School District of Lancaster on long-range planning issues, including growth projections, enrollment forecasts and capacity, school facility planning, safe routes to school, and land use issues on and around school campuses." So I think we are fulfilling our charge well in this case. Happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Director Delft. I'd like to invite, if there's any representatives, I see Heather from the Rec. Don't know if anyone's here from SDO.
Drew is here.
Yes. Oh, hi. If either of you would like to make any comment, you may do so.
Thank you for being here. Director Delft did a great job, so I don't have anything to add to that, but happy to answer any questions that might come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hirsch. I actually do have a question, just for both parties, just because this is a, this is a pretty monumental agreement. Obviously, we are in support of it, of this partnership and transfer of land and aligns with all of our goals. I just want to make sure that both of you feel that your organization's been fairly representative in the process, and that you feel that this is a good agreement for both of your organizations before we approve it.
I do. There's still some groundwork to be laid ahead as we identify the specific easements, so on and so forth, but as was said earlier, I believe it's a win-win-win.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I echo that. As you said, it's a monumental opportunity for Lancaster Rec to expand and provide probably upwards of 500 to 800 more childcare spots to our community throughout the year, which will hopefully result in greater workforce economy, as well as more educated children as well, too, so we're looking forward to that.
Great. Excellent to hear. Thank you both. Any other comments from council?
If I may have a question.
Counselor Diaz.
I don't know who can answer this. Sorry, we're gonna have to just go. In regards to the perimeter, will you guys be closing it? Will there be other type of restrictions from the recreational? In regards to the perimeter, will you guys be closing it? Will there be other type of restrictions from the recreational area?
Are you referring specifically to Brandon Park?
Yeah.
For, that's for SDOL then.
Generally speaking, no. Our hope is to coordinate all of the park elements into that integrated campus. There are certain structures, the School District would propose building our own playground associated with the school. Just like all of our other school properties, they are open for community use outside of the operating school day. So we encourage that use as much as possible, just not as we have our little ones out there utilizing it at the same time.
Thank you. I just wanted to, because of the situation that occurred in the southeast where they completely lost access, playing in that playground, I just wanted to see, because I'm sure we would have people very upset. I know a lot of kids do play in that area, whether they're, you know, they're teens or whether they're younger from the school, so I just wanted to make sure that we keep them happy.
Thank you. And I should follow up as well too. We'll be able to expand the resources that are on the current Brandon Park site. So we already are looking at both infant toddler play area, a nature playground, and then a larger playground refresh as well too. And again, those resources will be available to the public on that site.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from council? From Mayor Srojic?
Thank you Counsel President. I just want to thank Drew and Heather for going through this process. It was much more involved than I ever anticipated, and I appreciate that we've reached a point in time where we're able to move forward with the work that's required while still figuring out some of the things that we can't know just yet until we get further along in the planning process. I also just want to congratulate the REC for this opportunity. I feel really proud that we've been able to support the REC mission through the ARPA funding as well, and look forward to working alongside you to bring the project to completion, and really look forward to those additional childcare spots and appreciate your vision in bringing forward, you know, and being open to basically leaving a building that you've been in for a very long time and basically switching places. And the same thing at the School District of Lancaster, for really being opportunistic and thinking beyond the four walls of the existing Price Elementary and really bringing a vision for how to meet the future needs of the School District of Lancaster. And so I feel in this way, we are just kind of facilitating a movement, a piece of land that's moving from one part to another, and that feels really good. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Srojic. I also, in addition to the childcare slots, we keep mentioning also a right-sized Price, right-sized functional Price Elementary School for the neighborhood.
Correct.
Yeah. Additional comments from council? From the public? Tim? Thank you.
Tim Stuldrer, One United Lancaster, two questions. First, will any of the property owners be paying money to any of the other property owners as a result of this swap? And number two, after all of the construction and renovation is done, how many parcels will there be and who will own them?
Thank you.
Tim, you're testing my math here. Not about the funding, but about the parcels. The, within the agreement, there is not any money changing hands. That's not part of the agreement. As far as the the property itself, there will be one property that ends up with SDOL and one property that ends up with Lancaster REC. And then there will be a number of detailed easements that protect the park facilities on site. Correct. Of the, what is the existing Price Elementary School.
Thank you. And to clarify Heather, that was the REC Foundation.
Correct, yeah, Lancaster Foundation.
Additional comments on this from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Menon. Mrs. Rowan.
Hi.
Ms. Craig?
Hi.
Ms. Teas?
Hi.
Mr. Hirsch?
Hi.
President Baker?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Great, and that would reach the end of our legislative agenda for this evening. We will now move to our second public comment period, which is open for comments on issues not previously on the agenda this evening. Again, duration of comments is limited to three minutes per speaker. Please begin with your name and your block of residence for the meeting record. If there's anyone wishing to make public comment, do please do so at this time. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ben Rush. I live on the 400 block of West Marion Street. I'm one of the people who signed up for public comment after the deadline, but I'm also here as a member of Lancaster Men and I Action to urge the City Council to introduce and pass a resolution calling for ceasefire. Men and I Action supports the letter that was read in the beginning, and personally, I also believe that violence and funding war will never lead to a true and lasting peace, and I think that passing a ceasefire resolution is one small step in the right direction. I don't know what the path to a lasting peace will look like, but I know that the first steps must be a ceasefire and a halt to the United States supporting genocide and the apartheid Israeli government. And so I also know that it will be a long and complicated process that will probably take another 75 years, but 75 years from tomorrow is still a lot closer than 75 years from never. And so I urge everyone to do what they can and take the number of small steps needed to push us in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comments this evening, please go right ahead. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Miller Glick. I live in Lancaster City on Hager Street, and I'm here to urge you to adopt a ceasefire resolution. Members of the City Council, I am here today because I am tired. I am tired of the ever-growing numbers of Palestinian deaths, which has reached 36,615 people, over 15,000 of which were children. The massacre of 1,139 Israelis on October 7 was a tragedy, but it does not excuse the daily atrocities committed by the IDF. I am tired of reading the horrific stories of the Israeli offensive in Rafa, such as Sunday's bombing in a densely populated area, and the subsequent fire which killed around 45 refugees. I am tired of watching the federal government enable the dangerous and increasingly isolated Netanyahu regime when they should be using their diplomatic leverage to bring this war to a swift end. I am tired of countless other things, but I am not too tired to speak up. To the contrary, I am galvanized by the prospect of a lasting peace in Israel-Palestine, however far away that day may seem. I have found hope in the myriad stories of human resistance, including the stories of Israeli protests in Tel Aviv, which is proof that an end to this war and release of hostages is the best thing for Palestine and Israel alike. Today, I am using my voice to appeal to you, the leadership of our beautiful city, to add our voices to the international chorus demanding a ceasefire in Gaza. May we all act in accordance with our common humanity. Thank you for your time.
My name is Kat Richter, and I'm resident of Willow Street and a Realtor with the Dahlia Group at Keller Williams. As a Realtor, I advocate for homeownership in Lancaster City and the surrounding communities. As a part of the Dahlia Group, I'm committed to ensuring that homeownership is available to all and that any barriers preventing homeownership are removed. My client, Impact Missions, a local nonprofit housing ministry, has been a major contributor of affordable and quality housing, ensuring that homeownership is available for our residents that have limited financial resources. To date, Impact has provided more than 40 homes to city residents. We currently have an agreement of sale for a home on the 400 block of Green Street. Unfortunately, the buyer of this beautiful property is being kept from her dream of homeownership because of a lack of cooperation on the side of the city to rectify an issue that Impact has been trying to resolve for the past year. In fact, on the day of closing on this property, Impact was made aware of an administrative issue on the loan held between the city and Impact. However, city staff outright refused to help resolve this issue, leaving a local resident without a home that she worked hard to purchase, and a nonprofit organization unable to move forward with their housing ministry. We ask for your support in resolving this issue without further delay.
Ms. Richter, if you would not mind sending the specifics to the city clerk, or if you have a copy of those, just so I know exactly what we're talking about. Thank you.
And if you could please CC me, that would be very helpful. This is the first time I'm hearing about this issue, and I would like to make sure that we can get it to resolution.
Thank you. Additional public comments this evening? Hello, sir?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Matt Beeks, and I'm the Executive Director of Impact Missions. We have been working in the city since 2013 and as an organization since 2009. To date, we have rehabbed over 45 properties in Lancaster City that other nonprofits or developers would touch. We have taken not, problem non-tax properties and sold them to low-income first-time home buyers. We also worked with several different departments here in the city to provide assistance to residents in need of a helping hand, whether it be general maintenance, HVAC, a broken window, or full repair of a home items. We use the funds that we received from the sale of these properties, from the proceeds, and also from our reuse at Store in Washington Borough, and also through donations. Out of the 550-plus homeowners, Impact has helped countywide. At least 80 were right here in Lancaster City, providing a warm, safe, dry home. Things were going very well until about three weeks ago, when we tried to sell 421 Green Street to a low-income first-time home buyer qualified through Tenfold. In 2020, right before COVID, we bought the remaining five properties from Duane London. We rehabbed the first five prior to 2019 and into a little bit of 2020, and then unfortunately, COVID has decimated our volunteer base. We were serving about 500 volunteers per year and roughly around managing 28,000 volunteer hours. Roughly 40% of those hours were right here dedicated into Lancaster City to provide affordable housing and warm, safe, dry housing. We also work with the McCaskey Building Trade Students and provide opportunities for hands-on experience, exposures to professionals to hopefully provide post-employment post-employment graduation, and also hopefully to build that sense of community. The city, through the Economic Development Fund, provided Impact Missions with a $250,000 loan to rehab the five remaining properties. The configuration of the loan was in partnership with Tenfold. Things were working well again until about three weeks ago with this, when we tried to sell Green Street, and $168,000 was requested from the sale of the property to satisfy the lien. The original the original agreement was each property would have its own lien against it, and then we would pay the interest as we sold those properties. So Green Street should have had $36,666. South Lime, again, the same, $36,000, and then Juniata had $70,000. We currently have about $24,000 of interest, or about $8,222 per house. In September, we did ask for the lien to be, the loan to be a, to a grant because of us to try to redevelop and rebuild. However, in December, I had sent an email.
I'm sorry, we, we, I appreciate that this is a complex question that will probably take more than three minutes to resolve, so.
Agreed.
But please do send us the specifics because.
We definitely will.
Sentiment that we want to get it resolved, and I'm sure we can.
We definitely will, thank you.
Additional public comments for this evening? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Nancy LaBa, and I live on Woodward Street, which is in the southeast quadrant. For years, I wanted to move to Lancaster City and settle here. One reason being Lancaster has always been a city that cares about people, and as shown here, they care about our community, but they also care about everyone globally. And so I wanted to be a part of that. When I tried to move here, I couldn't afford almost any of the houses, and because I'm a veteran, I'm a United States Marine, I was using a VA-backed loan. So even the houses that were fixer-uppers that I could afford were out of my reach. So I kept looking and looking, and finally I came upon a house on Woodward Street, and Impact Missions was selling this home. I was able to buy the home and be in the city that I, I love living here. My parents live down the street, and so I'm able to be near them. I, I watch people buy houses in Lancaster and flip them and then sell them for, you know, huge amounts of money. And that puts living in a good home out of the reach for so many people. And if it wasn't for Impact Missions, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be living here. So I'm extremely thankful to them for giving me the opportunity to live in a house. It, it was condemned, and they did everything in the house. You know, brought it down to just the boards and redid the whole house. So I have a chance to live in a house that isn't going to need maintenance for a long time. I'm 59, so retirement is around the corner, and I can afford to be in this house while I'm working, but most importantly, I'll be able to afford to be in this house when I retire. So I would just hope that we can solve some of these issues, so other people who love this city and want to live here can purchase a home from people like Impact Missions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Cooper. I am the Building Trades Instructor at JP McCaskey, and I've been working with Matt Beeks and Impact Missions for the entire 11 years he's been doing this. He's done a wonderful job with my kids, offered several in recent years jobs with his, with his company to further their education in what they want to do in the trades. I mean, they get, they, the whole thing, sorry, they do the whole thing as far as, you know, foundations all the way to roots. He's teaching valuable, trade-skilled workers that we are in need of. So I'm in support of Matt Beeks and Impact Missions and hope that this gets resolved quickly because it does affect my kids and their learning as well, because there have been several times where we've had to cancel our cooperative experience because of city issues. So I hope that things get resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Hi, sorry, I already spoke, but my name is Cece Sodik. I am a Greenview Drive resident. I just wanted to address what was said earlier, and although I appreciate your notion of writing a letter to the federal representatives about your stance on the genocide, with all due respect, the time for writing letters is over. The time for handing the task to someone else and making them deal with it. The time for handing the task to someone else and making them deal with it is over. You were all put in a position of power for a reason, and it's a shame to hear you turn that power you have to someone else because you fear how a resolution would impact your Muslim and Palestinian community members. Because as a Muslim Palestinian myself, I think it should be up to me and others like me to make that choice. We have chosen to fight for a resolution despite any of the potential consequences, and your actions are actually more harmful, or your inactions are more harmful than any words or actions other community members can say or do to us. So again, I urge you to listen to our voices now and the voices of the community who has been out loud and consistent every single week before you worry about what would happen next. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brittany Mitchell, and I live on the 400 block of Grant Street. I have to say, I wasn't prepared or planning to speak today, so I just intended to come and listen and support the folks who are speaking. So I apologize if I am not the most composed with prepared remarks, but I just want to say, I was sitting here and listening. I felt moved to come up here and say that I believe that a letter is insufficient. I think that everyone has spoken very eloquently about the violence that we have seen, describing the images, the horrors, the indiscriminate and, you know, intentional cruelty that's being inflicted upon the people of Palestine. What I want to talk about is the fact that as government, our government, we are enabling and supporting that. And as our government, as our body of government that represents us, you have the ability to say, "We do not support that. We should not be doing that." I don't have the ability to do that as an individual. I have the ability to voice what I think as an individual, but you have the ability to say as a body of government that represents us that this is not right. And I think that it is insufficient to, you know, stand behind a premise of protecting people here as an excuse to not say, to not pass the resolution, when our inaction is enabling the actual real violence that is killing dozens of people every day. So I think as a welcoming city, we need to do better. As moral human beings, we need to do better than a letter. So I hope that the council will consider passing a resolution. Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
Hi, good evening. My name is Duncan Hopkins, and I'm a resident of the 500 block of Hamilton Street. Also, like Brittany, I wasn't intending on coming up to make public comment this evening, but I wanted to, again, like some of my other friends here, express my support for a ceasefire and urge this council to pass a resolution, urging for a ceasefire in Gaza and a return of all hostages, both from Palestine and Israel. When we're asking you to do this, we're not doing it because this is just the thing on the left right now. This isn't just some fleeting worry. This is people's lives. And yes, most of it is happening at the federal level with weapons being illegally sent to the state of Israel, but there's local stuff happening too. Pennsylvania has roughly $50, $60 million invested in Israeli bonds. We have countless businesses, residents, I'm sure, who are supporting this genocide, and that's terrifying. It is terrifying to feel like everyone is supportive of this genocide, because by and large, at most levels of government, they are. And to feel so isolated, I'm a straight white dude. I can't imagine, if I'm feeling this way, what some of my other comrades are feeling. We need to take action at every level. That is, people standing in small towns on a street corner alone, holding a sign that says ceasefire, and that is marches in Washington DC. And it is urging, it's urging the folks above us to make changes, because we need to divest from Israel. We need to end this genocide, and it is not just President Biden's responsibility, but it's the responsibility of everyone here to fight for it and speak out against the genocide. So again, I urge this council to pass ceasefire resolution. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Ashley. I'm a resident of Lancaster City. I'd just like to say quickly, I'm concerned with the claim that the welcoming city statement resulted in anti-immigrant hate. I'd like to offer an adjustment to this council of that statement. Supremacist violence resulted in anti-immigrant hate in our city. In the same vein, calling for a ceasefire during a genocide will not cause Islamophobia. Racial supremacy and colonial violence causes Islamophobia. What a shame it would be to not say what is right because of those who do wrong, and what a shame for a body trying to participate in a democratic process to trade in communal demands for individual recommendations. Ceasefire now and free Palestine.
Hello, my name is Anna Hess. I'm a resident of the 200 block of West Orange Street, and I'm also here to urge Lancaster City Council to pass the resolution of ceasefire. As Cece said, I think it is important that we not rely on things like letters, which are fine and good, but they are not enough, especially at this point. We have seen over seven months of atrocities. And as Ashley said, of course, just passing the resolution is not what is going to increase Islamophobia in our community. That Islamophobia is already here. And for the city council to officially come out on passing the ceasefire resolution and stating that these things are not acceptable, I think it's only going to mitigate these issues and not cause them to break out further. I have witnessed the white supremacy in my community. It does not need to be fueled by the government making statements against it to exist. It is already here, and we need at this point to express that it is not acceptable and that is not what we believe as a community. So I would urge you to consider the ceasefire resolution, as it is clearly what, you know, many of us in the public would like to see, and it is important and necessary at this point. Thank you.
Hello again. I'm here to echo my friend Cece. I'm concerned the offer for a personal. I know it's a phrase, but if you could start with her name again. Andy. My name's Andy. I'm concerned the offer for a personal letter, supporting your personal opinion and desire for a ceasefire, is a substitution for our community-written ceasefire resolution. By all means, write, sign, and send your letter. Your voice is important, but it is not more important than the community as a whole, and especially not more important than the local Palestinians who already know firsthand what it can be like there and here. Don't erase those voices. Don't tell this group of immigrants, refugees, Black, Brown, queer, disabled, Muslim, Palestinian folks that we don't already know what dangers lie behind our asks. We are the community who is already targeted daily. Overwriting the voices of your constituents with a personal letter as a substitution tells us that you view your opinion as more valuable than our lived experience. How does it make sense to say that Lancaster cannot pass this, but you will ask the president to do what you are not willing to do? This is not a request we are demanding. Pass the ceasefire resolution.
Hi, my name is Egon de Uriarte. I live on a little alley called Campbell Avenue in Lancaster. And I heard people say about the situation in the Middle East, that it's very complicated. Well, I think I can simplify it with two words: mercy and morality. That simplifies it. Mercy means compassion. If you don't have compassion for the people in Palestine right now, I don't know what to say to heal that problem, but mercy is important. Number two is morality. Genocide is evil. I don't have to explain that either. I rest my case.
Please come right up to my corner. Thank you.
Hi, Morgan again, from Washington Borough. I just want to make a comment off the cuff from white woman to white woman. You have so much opportunity here to be a leader. Leaders don't have followers. Leaders go first. Do something more than write a letter. You could have written letters months ago. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Taylor Enterline. I'm from Lancaster County in Manon Borough. I was not going to speak today, was really out here in solidarity, but we've been out for months as a community in the city, having lettering, writing workshops, reading workshops. We've written letters. As she just said, there was time to write letters. Our power is what we're doing right now, using our voice and demanding for a ceasefire. Your power, which you were elected and sitting up there, we are asking you to pass the resolution. And right now, what we're asking for is the bare minimum, after eight months of watching burned bodies and tents being, and people being massacred. We are literally asking for the bare minimum. So a ceasefire now and pass the damn resolution.
I wonder if anyone who wishes to do so to go. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi, thank you. Very briefly, my name is Mark Silverman. I live on Rice Avenue in Lancaster. I also was not preparing any remarks for tonight, but I, to be candid, often over the last eight months, I've felt a lot of futility, frankly, at times, because the forces in our country that create this kind of almost monolithic bipartisan support for Israel come with me unconditionally, they seem almost impossible to contest, but I am seeing that that is shiftable and movable, even just through local communities here in Lancaster and elsewhere in the country. And this actually has given me an enormous amount of hope, and it's greatly inspiring to be here tonight, to see this community do this. And I would therefore encourage you and the council to find, hopefully, something similar, that there is a way that, as others have said here tonight, that you could use your authority, as people who are representing a governmental body, to communicate what this community is saying, to pass a resolution expressing the will of this polity, that there be a ceasefire now. It's simply too deplorable. The events are heartbreaking in many dimensions. There was a gentleman here earlier, I didn't catch his name, who spoke of his Jewish background, and there is a dimension of heartbreak there as well, because the politics behind this are so discouraging, because there is the unfortunate weaponization of antisemitism, which makes the voices who are highly critical of Israel now often drowned out, but not here. And this has to change, and the fact that there's an opportunity here to change it, and the reason to not take the opportunity is that you gave it. I heard, I wasn't sure I heard it, actually. I was sitting here going, wait a second, did I hear what I thought I heard? The explanation is to protect the Muslim residents of this community, but they're part of the people who are asking, so it didn't make any sense. I thought I didn't hear it correctly. I was like, isn't it up to them? I really wasn't sure I heard it right. So I'm having trouble believing that that's sincere, and I'm sorry, I don't know you personally, but I would like to know if there are other reasons behind this decision, because it's difficult for me to believe that that could be the reason, or at least the sole reason, especially when people come back and say, "No, we understand the risks." So what additional or alternative justification could you possibly give, therefore, for not passing the resolution, given that response? I'd be very interested if there were some response to that. Thank you very much.
I find you hiding behind the Muslim community and using them as human shields to be absolutely deplorable. Your decision to write a letter is an act of cowardice and pro-genocide. It seems to me that the only reason you would take such an action instead of demanding a ceasefire would be to further your own political careers and to not stick your neck out for the people who elected you and who you are supposed to represent. Your actions are anti-democracy, and it will not be forgotten.
Tony Dastra, 700 block of New Holland Avenue. I also did not plan on making any comments tonight. I've just been sitting and listening to the comments so far. I don't know if this is amenable to the council, but I think it seems reasonable based off the presence tonight to allow this sort of issue to go up to city for citywide vote to decide whether the public truly feels we should be endorsing a ceasefire. I think those are some key words I've heard throughout the evening, because ultimately the issue here, and I think what we need to recognize as a public communicating with our city councils, that these are political issues, and there is political strategy involved in the decisions. When the city, you know, back in 2017, when it was asked how we feel about a sanctuary city, only one candidate said that they were in support of the notion, and then we have the welcoming city ordinance. We experienced backlash as a city, but I think that it was a good thing that we eventually encompassed that in the policies of our city. I think we do need to have consistency in our values, and while I recognize the struggles in politics when we live in this two-party system and there's essentially the bartering of lives, I do think it seems reasonable to allow the public as a whole, so that everybody can come out, not just people who might feel represented by the Democratic Party, but people who are independents and Republicans who support the idea of a ceasefire. So all that to say, the city code does allow a process for ordinance referendum. It seems reasonable that we should allow referendum for resolutions as well, especially one like this. Thank you, and have a good night.
I'm Quinn Ebigood. I live on the 300th block of Nevin Street.
You've stated that the intent of your inaction here is to protect the Muslim and immigrant community here in Lancaster from violence, likely from white supremacist people within this area. I ask you to question what exactly you think your silence will do, other than embolden those very same people. Standing by and doing nothing, saying that our city is not willing to stand up and say enough is enough, is simply encouraging that to continue within our community. We need to take strong stances against this sort of violence and to. We need to take strong stances against this sort of violence and to push it by the wayside isn't going to change anything. I just want to echo what everyone else has said here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Matt LeBelle. I'm, live in Lancaster County in Millersville, and I just wanted to draw some parallels to my own life I've seen in my fight for queer struggling, and I've heard quite a lot that I need to hide myself back or not show myself off as often to try and protect myself from other people who are perceived as harm. But what you're doing is just allowing those people to walk unafraid because they're not receiving any opposition except for the community themselves, because their own government, the people who elected you, you're just sitting there and letting them do what they want and letting people into harms way. You're not, I'm just so frustrated to see that months and months go by and governments think they can just keep passing the problem down the line, and the genocide going on for eight months doesn't deserve to just be passed down the line. It's disgusting. Don't have a nice night.
Good evening. To be honest with you, I didn't think I'd be speaking here in front of you tonight, but after hearing everyone else speak, I thought to myself, how could I not? My name is Almar Hamid, resident of Lancaster Hillside Drive. I look at my phone and I see the horrors happening in Gaza, Palestine. I'm an American, I'm a Palestinian-American, American-Palestinian, however you'd like to phrase it, and I see images on my phone, videos of things that are so gruesome that we can't see them on the news in the US here, but we see them through social media, and they are truly disgusting, truly horrifying. And if we imagine that our children are in Gaza right now, I think we have to ask ourselves how would we feel? I cannot believe this is going on for as long as it has, and the fact that our country, our United States of America, is letting it happen and nothing is being done is truly horrifying, and we have to remember our values as American citizens. We do not believe that our tax dollars and our support for a foreign entity that is called the apartheid state of Israel, because right now, that is actually what it's showing itself to be as far as its behavior goes. I'm a social worker, so I'm trying to advocate for everyone as much as I can, but nothing more important is this. This conflict has been going on for 75-plus years, and we can stop it now with the power that we have, the power that you guys have, and that's just what I want to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Hearing none, I am closing the second public comment period for this evening. Thank you all. Our next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor, Mayor Sraji.
No report this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the report, President of Council, which I have none this evening. Next is council comments. Any comments from other members of council?
Council President.
Counselor.
I just want to thank all of those who came out and speak tonight. Hearing some of your stories has been very moving, and I just want to thank you for your work.
Thank you. Additional comments from council? Hearing none, we've reached the end of our agenda. I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. We adjourn. Thank you.
Free Palestine.
Free Palestine.